Let's tackle your questions. First of all. Let's look at the bottom. Ooh, we got four of them already. This is exciting. I'm happy about this. Okie dokie. Um, fantastic. Okay. Um, you asked a great question. How did nativism impact sectionalism? This is kind of a period four type question, right? This is talking about, well, probably, yeah, before the Civil War. So nativism, we're talking the eighteen forties and fifties, especially the know-nothing party, the American Party. And those are ones that are going to be opposing the new immigrants. And uh, help me out. This is a question and answer session. Let's keep it going back and forth. Who are the new immigrants of the eighteen forties and fifties? Or at least larger waves during that time that are opposed by the nativist know-nothings? Uh, or, yeah, German and Irish. Yep. Eastern European segev is gonna be later in the century. So that's gonna be the eighteen eighties, nineties, nineteen hundreds, and then they'll eventually start to set up the quota system in the nineteen twenties. So uh, nativism before the Civil War is mostly against the Irish and the Germans, partly because of the temperance movement. And they tend to drink a lot, partly because of anti-Catholic bias, right? Things like that. And so how does nativism impact sectionalism? Uh, not directly, let's say, but let me just kind of explain the connection between the two. Because nativism before the Civil War is occurring where there are immigrants, like Germans and Irish. Where are their immigrants? Largely up north, because the north is where the industry is. The north is where there's gonna be a lot more manufacturing jobs, factories, large cities, et cetera, urbanization. And so antebellum urbanization is going to be occurring up north with immigrants. And thus, that, that is gonna cause nativism. There's not as much nativism down south, partly because there just aren't as many immigrants down south. And remember, if you remember from the antebellum era and period four, Democrats tend to be a lot more pro-immigrants. They tend to vote Democratic. And the Whigs tended to be a lot more anti-immigrant, or at least make them a little bit more American. And so down south, where there were quite a few Democrats, uh, they were more okay with the immigrants than people up north were. So I wouldn't say that, that nativism directly impacts sectionalism. It's more like nativism is a result of already existing sectionalism, if that makes a little bit of sense. So because all the immigrants are going up to the north, especially the northeast, uh, that's gonna be a really big deal. Especially um, places like Boston, New York, et cetera, that have large immigrant populations. Okay, great question. Let's see, um, this would be. Fady was asking, explain how regional interests affected debates about the role of the federal government from eighteen hundred to eighteen forty-eight. That sounds like a prompt. I'm not writing your essay for you. What do you think you're trying to pull here? No, um, yeah, that's a really big question, right? There's lots of potential stuff you could talk about here. Um, but again, kind of going back to what we were just talking about, keep in mind that before the Civil War, which is during this time period, period four, the antebellum era. Up north, there's gonna be a whole lot more manufacturing, and down south, there's gonna be a whole lot more agriculture. And so they're gonna have different, different uh, opinions about the federal government, depending on what they want the federal government to do. But largely start with geography and start with economics. And so up north. Uh, up north, there's gonna be a whole lot more of an interest in the government being larger to be able to protect manufacturers, protect patents. Think like Hamilton's financial plan from the seventeen nineties. And they're also gonna be very interested in the federal government doing the infrastructure necessary to have a thriving economy. Think the American system, right? Henry Clay, the National Republicans, the Whigs, that favor the government getting involved in canals, in railroads. In uh, roads, things like that. Whereas down south, they do not want the federal government nearly as involved, partly because they don't need to, at least they think. Because they have navigable rivers that they use, and it's more agricultural. And they're worried that if the national government gets too strong, then it's gonna be potentially able to take away their slaves. So one of the reasons that the Democrats tend to be a bit more conservative and small government, at least during this time period, is keep your hands off my slaves. Now, that being said, uh, they do have debates over the roles of the federal government about like foreign policy and military stuff. So the north during this time, this goes from eighteen hundred, that's the election of Thomas Jefferson, all the way to the Seneca Falls Convention Treaty of Guadalupe Adalgo. Uh, southern Democrats are much more interested in expansion, much more interested in gaining more land for agricultural expansion. And thus, um, they're gonna be in favor of the War of eighteen twelve against Britain and getting rid of the natives, uh, Indian removal. They're gonna be much more in favor of the war with Mexico, whereas up north, the Federalists at first, and then after the eighteen fifteen uh, Hartford Convention, once they go away, and then the Whigs come about. The Whigs and the Federalists are both gonna be opposed to both of those wars for the most part, right? Uh, and then be aware that they're also gonna argue over things like the tariff. They're gonna argue over things like slavery. So the north kind of wants some tariffs on items. So that's the federal government exercising taxation over imported goods. And then slavery in the territories, that's a big deal too. There's just a lot of stuff. So regional interests, think about what the priorities of the north are, priorities of the south. And then the role of federal government is nice and broad. So go nuts. Talk about any event that happens during that time period. Um, market revolution, foreign policy, et cetera, and you should be good. Yeah, awesome. Thanks for asking. Uh, let's see, we have a whole bunch of other ones coming up in the question queue as well. Um, yeah, the, the great famine caused many Irish to move to America, but what caused the Germans to move to America? Uh, oh, I accidentally clicked the wrong one there. Yeah, the potato famine causes the Irish to move more, but also economic opportunities in general, right? Um, Germany at this point is still in the process of becoming a nation-state, and so there's a little bit of economic instability back home. I wouldn't really worry about that too much. This is not AP Euro. The, the main things, yeah, push and pull factors. The main thing would be to be aware of the pull factors. Both of them are pulled in by the promise of industrial work. Think building the Erie Canal. A lot of Irish immigrants do that. Uh, think industrial jobs up north in textile mills, et cetera, towns up north. Um, push factors could be context. There just isn't a whole lot of it. I mean, you could maybe talk about like the Irish potato famine. But for the Germans, you're like, well, a lot of on Bismarck hasn't happened yet. It, it's just kind of too amorphous to maybe use. Um, but yeah, coming here for economic opportunity, maybe for some religious opportunity too. A lot of Germans tend to be Lutheran. And different kinds of Lutherans, so they're, they're looking for a fresh start. A lot of them moved to the west. In fact, if you look at the census data, the most recent census data we have from twenty ten. It shows that German ethnicity is the most prevalent amongst the most number of, of counties nationwide. So look up the twenty ten ethnicity by county map of the United States. It's fascinating to look at. And you'll see Germans all over the place, right? Um, so there's a lot of them too. Let's see, uh, kind of a little bit related. Rio was asking about who were the old immigrants and who were the new immigrants, and when was that a whole thing? Yeah, so um, if we're ignoring period eight and nine, because that's not on the exam, let's sort of talk about the period we do need to be aware of. Periods three through seven. Uh, old immigrants would be especially Anglo and Northern Europeans. So we're talking English, Welsh, um, Scottish, Scots-Irish, people like that, uh, Dutch, et cetera. And then even getting into the eighteen thirties and forties, like we were just talking about, even the Irish and the Germans would be considered old immigrants. So the English are gonna come around in period two, right? Jamestown seventeen, uh, sorry, sixteen oh seven, all the way continuing for a long time. Um, they never really go away. And there's gonna be some smattering of French around New Orleans, right? During the colonial era, uh, Dutch around New York and New Jersey, what was once New Amsterdam, et cetera. So that's gonna be seventeen hundreds. If you're talking seventeen hundreds, um, little bit of Germans. Ben Franklin gets a little bit worried about the Germans taking over. Think Germantown, which was a big battle of the Revolutionary War. Um, so the old immigrants would be people that are from the north and the west of Europe. So I would start with the English and the Dutch, but then I would even move into the French, German, and Irish. Because the old immigrants are gonna refer to anybody before the Civil War. After the Civil War, you're gonna get a whole lot more of those new immigrants. So we're talking now the seventeen seventies, seventeen eighties, seventeen nineties, nineteen hundred to about nineteen twenty-four or so, when they put in the Quota Act, nineteen twenty-one. Um, those new immigrants are going to include people like the Chinese, before the Chinese Exclusion Act of eighteen eighty-two. The Japanese before the Gentleman's Agreement, and then lots of Southern and Eastern Europeans. So Italians, Greeks, Polish people, Slavic people of various sorts, Jewish people, especially from Russia and Poland, Russians, just in general. And that's gonna be the so-called new immigrants, and that's going to be after about eighteen eighty. So if you're looking post eighteen eighty, remember the shift tends to go more Southern and Eastern. Be aware of where that is. That's kind of the difference between old and new immigrants. Awesome. All right. Um, let's see. Another question that somebody had. Pearl was asking, would you say that the corruption in Grant's administration greatly impacted the failure of Reconstruction? Um, I wouldn't say it's a non-issue. I would say that, well, two things. One, the College Board kind of skimps over the, the Grant Administration. So like, you don't have to know a whole lot about like the whiskey ring and things like that. Um, I would, I wouldn't say it's a non-issue, but it's not a, a great impact. That's probably overstating it a little bit. So remember, uh, if you were in the cram session last night for period five, we talked about how Reconstruction fails for two reasons. One, the South is intransigent. They're resistant. They're, they don't want to. No, 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 no blacks for, no rights for black people. And two, the North just gets sick of it. And one of the reasons the North might get sick of it and does get sick of it is because the Grant Administration is so corrupt that they start to focus more on civil service reform. And the Democrats think eventually you're Grover Cleveland's and people like that, who are gonna run on a civil service reform ticket. Uh, they are going to be more interested in cleaning up the politicians and cleaning up DC than on continuing to reinforce this thing called Reconstruction down south. So the two are, are somewhat connected that way, where, where the priorities tend to shift because of the corruption. I wouldn't say that people go, ah, Grant's corrupt, let's stop Reconstruction. That, that's a little bit too, too straightforward. Um, but yeah, people's priorities begin to shift partly because of Grant's administration's corruption. And they just get sick of Reconstruction in general. They'd rather focus on other things. Good question. Uh, let's see. When does corruption actually become an issue and during which administrations is it important to know of? Um, kind of that one. I mean, a little bit of that. I, I would say for corruption, um, the big ones. Be aware of Andrew Jackson and the spoils system, the corrupt bargain election of eighteen twenty-four with John Quincy Adams and Henry Clay. Um, maybe corrupt per se, maybe not. And then real corruption tends to be during the Gilded Age, so unit six. So after uh, James Garfield gets assassinated, remember by an office seeker who's like, give me a job. I deserve a job because I supported you. And then he's like, I don't know who you are. And then he gets shot in the train station. Um, after that, there's a big push for a lot of reform, and a lot of the corruption, think boss tweed, et cetera. That's gonna be happening later. Uh, Pearl, a teapot dome is going to be in the nineteen twenties. So that's Warren G. Harding, et cetera. Uh, so when you think about corruption, I would think about a lot of the Gilded Age. So that's when you get political machines, again, boss tweed kind of stuff. And that's also where you're gonna see uh, people trying to pass Civil Service Reform Acts, Grover Cleveland, Benjamin Harrison, those kind of people. Um, the Pendleton Civil Service Reform Act, where it's like, hey, we're gonna give you jobs based on how good you are at your job, and not based on who you know and how much money you give. Good thing we've taken care of that in American politics. Um, and then also be aware of the progressives, who will then try to clean up a lot of that corruption, especially when it comes to the Gilded Age. Uh, they will try to institute reforms. Again, think Wisconsin Plan, recall referendum initiative, um, other things like that. Yeah. So uh, yeah, and then Teapot Dome scandal, plus other corruption in the nineteen twenties, uh, just with laissez-faire, not a whole lot. Uh, Warren G. Harding constantly philandering on the side, right? Having mistresses and et cetera. Let's see, am, am I still answering the old SAQs and prompts that are open on the College Board? Uh, yes, Pearl. Yeah, um, if, if they're locked, that means you can't respond to them anymore. But if you'd like to respond to ones from, I believe it's period four, five, six, those kind of ones are still open, absolutely, yeah. So if they're still open and unlocked, you're welcome to answer those. Um, there is a deadline for non-cram people, but for cram people, we give you an extra week or so. So if you'd like some feedback on that, feel free to do that. Uh, let's see. All right, there's a bunch of stuff here. Um, not sure exactly the right order to go into this, but let's just jump in with a couple of them. Uh, can we explain how America got involved in World War Two? Nikki, that's a good question. So first of all, excuse me, just ate lunch before this. Um, first of all. You have to understand the causes of World War Two itself, right? So you need to be aware that like Hitler's taking over a whole bunch of stuff in Europe, uh, the Japanese are taking over a whole bunch of stuff in Asia and the Pacific. And so why does the United States get involved? Well, initially, we don't want to, right? Initially, we see it as a European war or an Asian war. Uh, when, when Japan invades China, we cut off their oil. And that makes, that makes um, Japan really angry. But the reason the United States gets, well. The United States gradually gets involved even before Pearl Harbor with things like the Arsenal of Democracy, right? So lend, lease, cash, carry, destroyers for bases, we're helping out. We're helping out um, mostly Britain as they're fighting the Nazis, right? Um, yeah, that's what happens. Uh, let's see. Hold on a second. Let me just try to take care of some of this stuff. Oh, looks like our chat's getting cluttered with some nonsense. Well, let's try to get rid of that. Um, just to make sure that people are not having to uh, see, see too much of that. Although I'm not aware of the reference, so maybe that's what's happening. So um, America gets involved in World War Two because the Japanese attack us at Pearl Harbor. But remember, we were involved selling things to the Allies even before that. So be aware of that. Um, how America gets involved in World War Two? So the how is lend, lease, cash, carry, destroyers for bases. There's the neutrality acts, but Roosevelt FDR, who's president at the time, tries to push us to get more and more involved. Partially because he realizes the Nazis are a big threat, and he wants to be able to prepare and help England. So England is standing alone, Battle of Britain, that kind of stuff, Darkest Hour with Winston Churchill. And uh, FDR wants to be able to help them. And so he's gonna turn the United States into the arsenal of democracy. We're gonna produce all of the weapons, material, ammunition, et cetera, that we can ship over there. And then, of course, the Battle of the Atlantic, the Nazis submarines, U-boats, untersebooten, undersea boats, literally. Uh, are trying to sink American shipping, and we try to do the convoy system, and we're sort of involved in a war there before we're even involved in the, in the technical war. So it gets really tricky. And then Pearl Harbor happens, December seven, nineteen forty-one. Japan attacks us, and we go, uh-uh, no, you didn't. And we start to attack Japan and gear up. A couple of days later, Nazi Germany declares war on the United States too. And so the United States goes to war with Nazi Germany too, which really helped out. Uh, it really helped out FDR, except Dr. Was like, uh, the Nazis are a bigger threat, but they didn't attack us. How do we solve this? So then we end up fighting for both, uh, against both of them and with the Soviet Union and England. Uh, Pearl, would Darkest Hour be a good movie to watch for like context or not really? Um, not really. I mean, it's, it's really, really just about Churchill and, and World War Two in England. And so, yeah, it's, it'd be maybe more useful for AP Euro, but even, even for that or for AP World, it's, it's not, it's pretty specific. It's a good movie. It's, it's well done, for sure. And then, yeah, Code Girls is a good book about decoding messages during World War Two. Yeah, lots, lots of good books about World War Two, right? Uh, Unbroken is fantastic. Yeah, uh, In the Garden of Beasts. Uh, the one that I'm about to read sometime in the next couple of weeks is Eric Larson's latest book, The Splendid and the Vile. That's all about Churchill, kind of Darkest Hour stuff. Yeah. So uh, Pearl, was that good? Uh, sorry, Nikki, was that good enough? Um, for explaining why we got involved in World War Two? Okay, awesome. Alrighty, then, um. Let's see, Fady was asking a question. Um, Fady, your question about uh, supply-side economics and trickle-down economics. That's pretty specific to period eight and period, well, even period nine, actually, after nineteen eighty with the Reagan administration. So that's, that's pretty specific to things we don't need to do for the exam. I can cover that real quick, but just for those of you that are like, whoa, was that? Um, don't worry a whole lot about that. So supply-side economics or um, trickle-down economics. So supply-side economics says, we need to stimulate the supply side of the economy, not the demand side of the economy, AKA um, make sure that the companies are doing well, and then help out giving tax cuts to the rich, some deregulation, things like that. And that way, corporations who also have tax cuts will make a whole bunch of money, create a bunch of supply, and then that'll eventually trickle down. So you help out the job creators, you help out the people at the top, and you cut taxes for them. And eventually, all that job creation will trickle down as people get jobs, and that'll be a whole lot better. Uh, that is a very conservative philosophy, very controversial, right? Uh, the so-called Laffer curve allegedly was going to make it so that uh, these would, these reductions in taxes would pay for themselves, because reducing in taxes would lead to more spending. And that would produce more tax revenue, and so this wouldn't increase the deficit. That turned out not to be the case at all. Uh, but trickle-down economics is still very, very controversial. I'm not sure there's a whole bunch of consensus on that. I think the majority of economic economists don't think that really works a whole lot. Kind of need to have a combination of both, but that's kind of stepping into political territory. So, yeah, uh, that's Reagan in period nine, so nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-nine. Cutting taxes for corporations and the people at the top with the hopes that they create jobs that then trickle down the money to the rest of the people. Uh, let's see. Pearl was um, talking about Tom Ritchie said that he doesn't think there would be a DBQ after the nineteen hundreds. What do I think about that? Um, I think that there's no way of knowing, so you couldn't possibly say anything like that. It's, that's just kind of irresponsible, actually, because we just don't know that. Um, it, he, he may, I, I, I didn't hear him say that, right? So I don't know how he said it. But um, it could be unlikely, but that's why they cut it off at period seven. So period seven is basically all in the nineteen hundreds with a couple of exceptions to the Spanish-American War stuff. And there absolutely could be a, a DBQ on period seven. I mean, yeah, if you were to ask me my guesses, I'd be like, oh, probably a period four or a period five or six or something like that. But we, we just have no way of knowing. Um, they could require you to know period seven, and there's a lot that happens in period seven. So, yeah, the odds are about, well, say, three, four, five, six, seven. The odds are about twenty percent that it'll be one of those periods. Who knows, right? Uh, let's see here. It's a big topic in AP Gov. Yep, yep. And then. Yeah, a lot of the, the optional student practice DBQs have been three or four. Um, Sierra, are you talking about the ones on Fiveable, the ones on the College Board, or ones from your teacher or things like that? Um, College Board, okay. Yeah, yeah, they've had some of those on there. I, I would say personally that uh, periods three and four are, are, they have a lot of stuff. But it's also the earlier ones, so they might give you a lot of that. So who knows? Uh, period six is just hugely all over the place. So I'm hoping it's not that, but you never know. Could be. Uh, let's take a look at some other questions. Sue, a lot of questions on the Great Depression and the New Deal. All right, Angelo was talking about what effects did the Great Depression have on other areas like social, cultural, political, et cetera? Uh, great questions. So let's see if I can. Do things here a second. There we go. Um, yeah, let's talk about that. So the Great Depression influences a bunch of stuff. First of all, it's gonna influence culture, because people are gonna create poems and um, books and songs about the Great Depression, right? So no depression in heaven, et cetera. Uh, socially, it's gonna lead to the downfall of uh, President Hoover. So politically, partly because of the Bonus March, right? President Hoover is going to kind of look bad. Everyone's gonna blame him. He's the president during the Great Depression. And arguably, he doesn't do enough or fast enough, but also he just gets the blame because he's president, right? Um, yeah, uh, how does it influence other things? It's gonna influence FDR, because it allows FDR to be elected as president and then inaugurated in nineteen thirty-three. It's gonna lead to his creation of the so-called New Deal Coalition. And so you're gonna see a whole bunch of African-Americans and lower-class people, uh, working-class people, blue collar workers, et cetera, joining the Democratic Party. That's a big deal. Um, yeah, so culturally, it's gonna lead to new things. I mean, people go to the movies a little bit, so that way they can deal with this. Think Gone with the Wind, et cetera. Um, and then think about, um. Yeah, creation of, of movies and music and things like that. Um, did the Great Depression cause a religious following increase? I'm not necessarily sure. Um. A little bit. I, that's, that's a little bit beyond what I know about there. But yeah, the Great Depression shifted the political parties and their followers. Yeah, Tegus, that's one of the really big shifts. So when you're looking at like why Democrats and Republicans have kind of switched sides, that's the start of the switch. Now, it doesn't actually fully happen until the sixties and seventies, but FDR is one of the persons that begins. Well, first of all, the major shift is African-Americans are no longer voting for the Republican Party, AKA the Party of Lincoln, right? It's become the party of big business, and they just don't give a rats behind about African-Americans during this time period, or so the African-Americans think. And so they gravitate toward FDR, who tends to be a bit more interested in doing things for them, at least according to what they think. Yeah, so that's a really, really big deal. Uh, speaking of the New Deal, which programs and laws fell under each R? There's a lot of examples, and which falls under what? Yeah, Rio, let's talk about that a little bit. So the New Deal involves the three Rs, AKA relief, recovery, reform. Uh, relief is gonna be giving help to people who need it really, really fast. Um, think Emergency Banking Act, think um. Shoot, the name is escaping me, but other, other like direct assistance to the poor stuff. And then you're gonna see recovery, and that's gonna be more like the National Recovery Act, the AAA, the CCC, right? The Civilian Conservation Corps, putting young men to work in national parks, the AAA, Agricultural Adjustment Agency, where they pay farmers not to uh, harvest or not to kill hogs, things like that, so that way the price can go up. And then uh, plenty of other things like the Works Progress Administration and other things that do a lot of infrastructure projects. And then reform. Reform is going to be the last one, the one that lasts the longest. So think of things like the SEC, the Securities and Exchange Commission, that oversees the regulation of, of stock trading to make sure there's not a lot of sketchy stuff going on there. You could talk about the FDIC, the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation. That's the one that makes sure that banks are able to be steady and that your deposits are safe no matter what. You could talk about Social Security Act, right? That's a little bit of relief as well as reform. So you have old age and unemployment benefits and pensions and stuff like that, disability pension, et cetera. That's a really big deal. Um, yeah, a lot of those are challenged by the courts or challenged in the courts, right? Uh, so things like the National Recovery Act is struck down by the um, by the Supreme Court. They argue that it's too large and unconstitutional, uh, but a lot of those still show up, right? So uh, you could talk about like the Social Security Act still exists, right? Et cetera, et cetera. Um, ooh, what's this that we're sharing here? The Fiveable New Deal PDF? Ooh, I'm happy about this. Ah, yeah. That looks good to me. Looks good to me. Wonder if I actually made that. It could have been, if I was taking from the study guide. Uh, because I did the one on period seven. Ooh, there was a lot of stuff there. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that has a lot of good ones. Nice job. Uh, so that'd be very helpful. Yeah, some of them are, are challenged in the courts. National Recovery Act is probably the most famous. The NIRA and the NRA and things like that, industrial ones, are the ones that involve price ceilings and a lot of regulations. That's challenged by the courts too. So, there you go. Yeah, that's, um, yeah. All right. So that's good there. Um, could I explain the first and second confiscation acts during the Civil War? Uh, sure thing, Alicia. So confiscation acts, right? Those are, are trying to take away the slaves that are owned by the Confederacy. Uh, because remember, property includes slaves at the time, and so confiscation of, or contraband is what confiscated uh, pretty is called, right? So first of all, there's Benjamin Butler asking President Lincoln, like, what do I do with this? And then President Lincoln says, all right, you're able to have confiscation of enemy property, because they're using them in rebellion. And this way, we can weaken the Confederacy and help the United States. So first confiscation act in sixty-one, that says any slaves that fight for the Confederate military, there aren't any. But ones that are like helping out, you know, building stuff, um, they can be confiscated, uh, because they were used to support the, the rebellion. And then the second one in sixty-two says that like, any Confederate official or person in the military or civilian who doesn't already surrender and just let the United States take over would have their slaves freed also. And so this is only, but, but it only applies to Confederate areas that have been occupied by the US Army. So it, it makes it sort of, these are leading to the Emancipation Proclamation, which would be a good idea to be aware of. So the confiscation acts, think of them as like taking slaves away from Southerners, think Benjamin Butler and early versions of the Emancipation Proclamation, which frees all of the slaves in all the areas that the United States hasn't taken over yet. Uh, or retaken, and it allows the, the slaves then to run away from the Confederacy and join the United States Army. That's a double benefit for the United States. Yeah. Hopefully, that was all good. So confiscation acts, again, taking slaves from the South. Uh, how and why did FDR serve more than two terms? Kind of going back to that there. Um, yeah, Emma, uh, FDR. Um, yeah, Emma, uh, FDR serves more than two terms because there's no constitutional amendment that says that he can't, right? So he, he's in the middle of the Great Depression and the middle of World War Two. He's like, look, we got a good thing going. Let's not switch horses in the middle of the stream, sort of thing. And so he says, look, I'm being successful. Um, we're going through a bunch of crises, the Great Depression and eventually World War Two. And so by nineteen forty, when he runs for a third term, it is very controversial. And a lot of people were like, ooh, Washington didn't do that. You're breaking with precedence and pattern and you're breaking what you're supposed to do. But there's no law against it, no constitutional law against it until the lame duck twentieth amendment, uh, sorry, uh, twenty-second amendment that's passed. That changes that, but uh, yeah, he's allowed to do that because there's no law that says he mayn't. And he argues that it's important to stay with a steady, working leadership. So there you go. Let's see. So what did FDR, FDR do to help organize labor? Ooh, this will be the National Labor Relations Board, NLRB, right? And the, he allows unions to organize. And so labor unions and blue collar workers and working rights people uh, frequently will go to FDR and go to the Democratic Party because he helps them organize and helps them negotiate. Uh, he's going to help them sort of get legal status for their unions. So the, the, the National Labor Relations Board is maybe one specific example, the Wagner Act. Yeah, okay, Ria, good job. Yeah. The Wagner Act also encourages unions and allows them to exist, right? And so we start to see unions getting more legal protection rather than just being attacked all the time under the Sherman Antitrust Act, et cetera, right? Um, yeah, so he helps organize labor that way. Plus, plus just being, instituting things like minimum wage and price controls or minimum safety standards, things like that, those are all going to help organize labor too, albeit not directly. Uh, Glass-Steagall Act is related to it. It, it is FDR. That's the one that says that banks that do investment can't be also banks that do deposits. It's kind of separating the two, so creating two different kinds of banks. And of course, that gets repealed in the late nineteen nineties, which makes Bernie Sanders very mad because he's always about like, bring back Glass-Steagall, right? Because he thinks that that's one of the reasons why we had the oh-eight, oh-nine Great Recession. Doesn't like the banking collapse because they're investing too much money and then when they collapse, it causes problems in the economy, et cetera. Yep. Uh, let's see. The significance of Lincoln suspending habeas corpus, Alicia. So that's going to be during the Civil War. And Lincoln is going to be able to lock up whoever he wants, whenever he wants, for as long as he wants without charging them with a crime. So that's very, very significant because it's unconstitutional. He gets some permission to do it some, but it's during a rebellion, right? So he's like, well, I can do this because there's an open rebellion, but it's pretty sketchy. So he uses that to lock up copperheads or peace democrats who disagree with the war effort. He also uses it to lock up Maryland pro-secession people because he doesn't want Maryland to vote to secede because that would surround DC with a bunch of Confederate territory. So he locks them up until they can vote to stay and then he lets them go. So kind of a genius move, but also very, very sketchy. Uh, copperheads are just people that are pro Confederate sympathizers up north. Like a copperhead is a deadly snake and a snake in the grass is a term for a traitor. So copperheads like Clement Velendingham are going to be considered like traitorous people. Peace Democrats sometimes are the same thing, um, but seen as being like pro Confederate sympathizing northerners. Okay, uh, then. Around what time period did the first wave of feminism take place? Um, there's a, there's a lot of different scholarship on that and people have different answers to that. You should be aware of women's rights in a variety of roles. I would say first wave feminism is going to happen in the nineteen sixties. But you could also make the argument that's going to happen in the nineteen twenties with Margaret Sanger and birth control and stuff like that. But then again, why not talk about the progressives or the cult of domesticity and the um, eighteen forty-eight Seneca Falls Convention, or Republican Motherhood and Abigail Adams, Remember the Ladies, right? So, yeah, I, I would say feminism starts to become a thing in the nineteen sixties. Think of reproductive rights, think of women wanting to get the right to work, to have time off, to not get discriminated against. Think Title Nine in nineteen seventies, et cetera, et cetera. But there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes way earlier. So usually when people say first wave feminism, they mean the nineteen sixties, um, but not always. And you should be aware of women's rights that go way before that too, right? Because obviously the test's going to stop in nineteen forty-five. Let's see, Ria is asking, what's the Roosevelt corollary to the Monroe Doctrine? So that Monroe Doctrine, remember, says Western Hemisphere, all the Americas, Latin America, North and South America, Central America. All of that is off limits to Europe. Europe, stay out. No more colonization. We got this. We're the United States. You stay out. The Roosevelt corollary, corollary just means something that goes alongside of or accompanies, and that comes from Teddy Roosevelt. So Monroe Doctrine was eighteen twenty-three and everyone just kind of laughed and was like, yeah, sure, whatever. And then they kept each other away anyway because of the balance of power. But by the time of the Roosevelt corollary in the early nineteen hundreds, the United States has grown into a world power. And TR, Teddy Roosevelt, who's president after McKinley gets shot, he says, look, not only should Europe stay out, but the United States has the authority to go in. So if anybody misbehaves, any Latin American or Caribbean country that misbehaves, we have the right to intervene to make sure that they are paying back their debts, they're protecting property, protecting credit, especially from investors in the United States and Europe. Because if they default on their loans, if they are chaotic, if they don't respect European property, Europeans might use that as an excuse to get involved and reconquer territory. And so we're going to, the United States is going to safeguard all those areas and say, Europe, stay out. We got this. Don't worry. Your investments are safe. No need to bring your gunboats around here. So that's the Roosevelt corollary. It's just the United States stepping up a whole bunch. And getting involved in the Caribbean and Central America, much to the detriment of a lot of stuff there. And yeah, that, that's related to the Panama Canal in the sense that, I mean, TR helps Panama become a country to secede from Colombia. And then he, they give him the Panama Canal and thanks for that. And then he starts to dig it and it takes a while, but that's part of the United States kind of, yeah, the having control over much of the Americas militarily, including the Panama Canal and the Panama Canal Zone, that is part of the United States uh, for almost a century. Yeah, that's going to be a big deal too. Let's see, um, could y'all explain the differences between capitalism, socialism, communism and fascism and all those things? That's a lot of is-ifs. Yeah. Uh, great question, Angela. So when you're thinking about that, um. Couple of things. One, capitalism is a description of an economic system, right? Sometimes called free market system. It's based on supply and demand. It's based on whatever anyone wants to sell for or buy for. So it's all market prices, supply and demand, free market. You can make your own decisions, very individualistic. A hundred percent capitalism is a free-for-all and it's called laissez-faire where the government has hands off, doesn't do anything, doesn't get involved. Yeah, no, no countries really have that. Um, but the United States gets kind of close during the, the period six, so the Gilded Age, et cetera. Although the government really takes sides of the big business, so that's not really laissez-faire, I suppose. Um, but yeah, capitalism is supply and demand, free market, et cetera. Socialism is a, an economic system where the government takes control of certain key industries or certain key manufacturing parts. And so the United States actually has some instances of this, some of which come about from the populists or the progressives or FDR's New Deal. So that's going to be things like, well, even just the post office, right? That could be considered a socialistic program because the United States government controls that. There's not really a, a private entity that does that. Uh, you could talk about uh, Social Security. You could talk, so any, anytime the government gets involved, even the graduated income tax, right? The fact that you pay more income tax percentage-wise as you get richer as a way to sort of help them pay their fair share, uh, that's a socialistic program a little bit. It's the government getting involved in the economy. More regulations, so safety features could be considered part of that, but, but not really. That's just called regulated capitalism. Uh, communism, and this is the part that gets kind of complicated, communism is both an economic system and a political system. And this is why it gets confusing, right? People often use socialism to be like, ah, you're a socialist. And they like compare that to Cuba and Russia and Venezuela and places like that. And it's just, it's just not really that useful. Um, socialism says the government gets involved in some major things, but that could involve healthcare, Medicare, Medicaid, sure. But also like Bernie Sanders, single payer type stuff. Um, or, or like what a lot of the Scandinavian countries have, or Britain's National Health System, Health Service, sorry, that, like that kind of stuff. That's considered socialism too. Communism, the idea here is we don't need to make the inequality less like in socialism. We want to flatten it altogether. So generally the idea is this is called a centrally planned economy. The idea is that the government makes decisions. No one is unemployed because everyone either works for the government or, yeah, pretty much works for the government. The government takes all of the stuff and then redistributes it equally. Except all of the communism that's ever been tried ends up because of this thing called sin, you know, fall in human nature and, and people being bad. They, they don't get past the point where the dictator takes all the stuff and then, never happens. So what we, what we often see is not communism, but Stalinism, where the, the person in charge takes all the stuff, gives it out to their cronies and then doesn't give a whole lot to everybody and everybody starves, partially because there's less incentive, right? If you're going to make fifty grand a year, no matter how hard you work, you're not going to work very hard sometimes, at least some people, right? And what if you can't work? Well, then you're fine. So, so the, the thing is, one of the, one of the reasons why people are sometimes drawn to socialism and, and communism versus capitalism is on paper, they appear to take care of people like that a little bit more. Capitalism just says, I mean, this is almost like uh, social Darwinism, right? Where capitalism, pure capitalism says, well, if you can't work, too bad. You better get someone else to help you. Otherwise, you're just lazy and a drag on the system. Like, what is this? Uh, whereas communism would say, hey, from each according to their ability, to each according to their needs. So you need more, you can have more. That's fine to be able to make everyone equal. Doesn't really work out that way in reality because absolute power corrupts absolutely, as Sierra said. Nice job. Uh, fascism, fascism is a form of totalitarian dictatorship where the state controls totalitarian means state controls everything. Fascism is obsessed with military power, with masculinity. It's obsessed with um, nationalism. It's hyper nationalism. It's very, very far right, just as communism is very, very far left. Fascism is very, very far right. Um, and then, yeah, so let me, let me get to the bigger question here. Tegus, you're asking a great question. So, big picture, why do you need to know these terms or how do you need to know them? So capitalism, be aware that capitalism replaces mercantilism in period three. Adam Smith writes The Wealth of Nations, AKA The Birth of Capitalism book in seventeen seventy-six. Um, and so the United States is a capitalist country, albeit not a hundred percent, right? Be aware that capitalism starts to unravel a little bit in period six, after the Civil War with the Gilded Age, because people see all the cruel sides of this and how it looks really bad. And so they say, well, how about, let's, let's, we're desperate. Let's turn to something else. How about socialism or communism? The problem with socialism, um, I'm sorry, the problem with communism is unlike socialism, socialism says, let's, let's even out the inequalities by peaceful political ends. Run for office, pass laws. Communism in its pure form, in its ideological form, says, let's do this violently. Seize the means of production, seize the factories, take the stuff from the rich people and distribute it to the poor. A little more French Revolution-y. So during the Gilded Age, when you see communists and socialists, I, ideas spreading in the United States, particularly from immigrants from Eastern and Southern Europe, uh, people think those are very dangerous, especially when they start to associate them with anarchism, which is totally different, but that's more, even more violent. And so they start to go, oh no, socialism, communism, anarchism, all the same. They want to take my stuff and kill me. And then they get really nervous. Um, fascism, you need to know because of the Nazis in the nineteen thirties. It's not AP World or AP Euro, so I wouldn't worry too much about that. But it's kind of important for modern American history just because anytime any party starts to get kind of similar to the fascists or to the Nazis, it gets a little bit nerve wracking, right? You're like, oh, you, you tend to be very obsessed with flags and marches and rallies and masculism, masculinity and nationalism and only one leader and obsessed with plots against that one leader. Like think kind of Kim Jong-un-ish kind of stuff. Um, so in that sense, it's like important for being good citizens, but for A push, I think you're okay. Ooh, that was a long answer to that one. Um, oh, shoot, I think I just accidentally answered one that I didn't actually answer. Let's see if I can find this. Um. We did that, we did that, we did that. A whole bunch of other questions. Oh, Ria was asking like. I know, we already answered that one too. I think we're good. Okay, I think we're good. Yeah, it feels, and then Sierra was saying, it feels like conservatives compare socialism to communism and liberals compare conservatism to fascism. Uh, you're, you're indeed correct. And the reason for that is somewhat logical in the sense that like, here's the American political spectrum. And as you go further this way, um, is this left for you folks? I think it is. Uh, the far, far, far left is, is communism and far, far, far right is fascism. So those are the ideological extremes. Now, in reality, uh, America in general is just a little bit far right compared to the rest of the world. So even, even your liberal democrats are going to be just barely left of center. And your extreme liberals are still going to be relatively conservative by world standards, but you know, take an AP Gov course, I suppose. But, yep. Uh, let's see. Alicia was asking, what are some tips on effectively sourcing documents? So. A little bit hard to do without looking at a whole bunch of these, or a whole bunch of documents, but a couple of things for effectively sourcing documents. Uh, and if you want to know more, um, hitch a ride on one of those cram passes because we, we talk about those at the end of every cram pass. And then we're going to have an entire one dedicated just, just doing DBQs. So a little bit deeper dive there, but let's talk about that for right now. Um, when it comes to uh, hipping documents or analyzing documents, remember the HIP, H-I-P-P. And then the O for outside evidence, or happy, maybe your teacher uses, but historical context, intended audience, purpose and point of view of the author. Uh, my recommendation to you is a couple of things. One, always do historical context if you can, because historical context is a little bit easier in my mind to get. It's a little bit less uh, fluffy and you have to be able to show that you know what you're talking about. So do that and show what you know what you're talking about. Um, if you're doing IP or P, you only have to do one of the four, but in reality, you kind of have to do IPP altogether. Like, let's say we had a document that was one of FDR's New Deal uh, programs, like a, a, a poster on the Social Security Act that I've seen before. You might want to talk about the context of the New Deal, maybe the three Rs, the, the Great Depression, FDR's inauguration. You know tons of content about that. Go ahead and say that and then use that in such a way to, to prove your thesis. Um, if you're doing IPP, you shouldn't say the intended audience for this poster is the American people. Well, yeah, that's like painfully obvious and it doesn't really add anything. Think about value added all the time, right? You constantly want to be saying, what am I giving them in exchange for them giving me credit or points for doing this particular skill? So if you're doing IPP, which I think you should do together, I think you should say, this poster was created to inform the American public about the new Social Security program that the FDR had created. FDR hoped that this would become popular enough that it would help people out and secure his chances of reelection. Ooh, well, now you've said why they're printing posters and to whom, and now you've actually started to say something, right? Um, so that's really good. Uh, by the way, when it comes to, to hipping, um, one of the things that I, I like to, to suggest as well is each document suggests a bigger topic that you should be talking about in your DBQ. So if you see Social Security Act, you should talk about FDR's New Deal and the three Rs and all those things like that. And remember with Perla, you only have to use four of them. I suggest you use all of them, using, meaning summarizing and tying to your thesis uh, in order to get the usage point. For hipping, you only have to do two. So you've got plenty of mulligans for that. Um, I would suggest doing three, just to give yourself a little cushion, but that's okay. So you think of each document as an example of a larger trend. So I would use the document and then I would talk about how that, that document illustrates a larger trend. And that's how you do the IPP. So say, FDR used his alphabet soup programs in order to make the Great Depression less stinky for the American public and to help them out during economic hard times. One example of this would be the Social Security Act. And then you talk about what the Social Security Act was, that's using the document. Now, in this hypothetical poster, you'd say, and they even created posters. So that's an example of the Social Security Act in action and it shows how FDR was, was engaging with the American public, something like that. Uh, Anna was saying, this is your A push teacher's first year teaching A push. Oh man, bless their heart. I remember that. That was scary, I tell you. Well, thanks for giving them a lot of grace. Um, he did a lot of essay cues, which is great. That is the foundation and building block of all the writing. What would you recommend for those who barely cover DBQs? Um, a couple of things. One, make sure that you're uh, looking at, well, first of all, Fivable has some excellent DBQ guides. There's also some other good ones on YouTube that you can find. Look up practice DBQs from past years. Look up sample essays, um, even though this year's rubric is a little bit different, right? It's basically just expanded. So look up last year's DBQ. You can find that on the college board website. Look up the past um, student responses. You can get them. They're already graded. So you can look at them and go, oh, look, and, and the scoring guide has a whole bunch of options for like, here's what a good thesis looks like. Here's what contextualization looks like. And then you can read whole student essays. So that's, that's probably my, my first recommendation is read sample essays that have been scored before and get a sense of what they even look like. That'd be a great way to do it. Um, yeah, and there's, the Fivable has some guides on the DBQ and stuff like that. There's a, there's a whole DBQ guide, et cetera. Uh, we also cover this a little bit in some of the free streams on Thursdays. We'll go over the, the rubric real quick. And then if you really want some deep dive into some writing stuff, that'd be a cram pass type thing. And Tegus is throwing down the uh, Fivable guides. Fantastic. Yeah. Uh, Hamlet's History has some good tips. I'd recommend. Uh, Heimler's History has some good tips. I'd recommend looking at that one. Khan Academy has some good ones. Good, good, good. Yeah. But there, and here's the thing, Anna too, if you've only done SAQs, SAQs are the, again, like the building blocks of the entire DBQ. So if you're doing, talking about contextualization, well, you need, maybe you've talked about ACE before, that acronym for answering SAQs. Uh, use ACE all the time. So when you talk about your contextualization, ace it. And then have your thesis and then in your body paragraphs, ace your outside evidence. That's what you want to do to get the outside evidence point. So it's just basically using a whole bunch of, of SAQs mini ones in order to answer the DBQ together. Okay. Any other questions I can answer right now? Oh, sorry. Uh, ACE is answer, cite, explain or expand. Basically this just reminds you of what you need to do on a good SAQ. You want to make sure that you drop a vocab word. You define what it is and you tell me why I should care and how it proves your thesis. So drop a vocab, define the vocab, explain why I should care and how it proves your thesis. Anytime you're using a vocab word in your essay, you should always define what it is and tell me why I should care every time. Uh, we don't give you points on the DBQ just for listing vocab like, oh, New Deal, FDR, A, A, C, C, PWA. Good. And then move along, right? You have to use one of those. Tell me that you know what, what it means by defining it yourself and make it prove your thesis. By saying this demonstrates how the FDR administration, yada, 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 right? So that'd be a good thing to do. Uh, we are almost out of time, so let's dive in a little bit to the economic review. I'll just go through these really quick. If you want to re-watch it later or look at the slides later, those will be posted on Fiveable. But just as a reminder, these question and answer sessions are mostly here for your questions, which were just all over the place. They were great questions, but they were from a whole bunch of different units. And then I kind of choose a specific topic to go over each week, just as, as a quick kind of thematic review. And I was thinking about doing some economic review this time. So, oh yeah, here's the, uh, DBQ stuff that we didn't even get to either. Nice job. So you've seen that before. Anna, for sure. Look up the modified DBQ rubric on the college board website. After you're done looking through some of those videos and guides and things. Uh, so economic review, I would think of it like this. You want to look at economics, well, think about labor. Who's working? Trade goods. What are they making? What are they trading? Location? Where is the trade occurring? Where is economics occurring? Industrialization, different kinds. Where does it happen? How does it change things? Technology, new inventions that make things more efficient, that transport things differently, that enable new industries to arrive. And then regulation is the economy getting regulated by the government? Are big business people trying to regulate themselves, et cetera? And then be aware of the boom and bust cycle, right? So depressions, recessions, panics, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, this is a little bit period two and one, or sorry, so let me make this a little bit bigger for you. Periods two and one are not necessarily on the exam. So I wouldn't worry about that too much, but you should know the Colombian exchange, right? That's a big deal. Talks about transfer of people and goods and, and explains slavery, which is a, an important thing to be aware of. It explains population growth, et cetera. Excuse me. Be aware of each of the English colonies and what they make, right? New England is all about agriculture and commerce. So they do corn, beans and fish, but also rockier soil. So they do things like rum, logging, shipbuilding, et cetera. The middle colonies are the breadbasket colonies, so cereal crops, wheat. Chesapeake colonies in North Carolina, they're going to be doing tobacco, richer soil. They have plantations. And then the southern ones and the Caribbean ones are going to be rice, indigo, sugar, labor intensive cash crops. Cotton will come later. Yeah. So Ria, the managerial revol- revolution, um, could refer to a variety of things. One of them I think would be during period six, when they start to introduce the idea of middle management. So it's no longer master and apprentice or like one person that works and, and trains everyone else. It's more like, we have a boss and we don't know who he is, the owner, we don't see him, but we have middle managers. And so we get corporations and corporate structures and things like that for the first time. First corporations largely going to be railroads. Yeah. Uh, remember mercantilism is a thing in period two and then in period three. So remember with mercantilism, you want a positive balance of trade as much species possible. And you want to import finished goods and then export raw materials, or sorry, the other way around. Finished goods come from the mother colony, uh, mother country. And then raw materials come from the colonies. And remember for England, this is enforced via the navigation acts, but they're not enforced because of the expense, which means salutary neglect and smuggling and stuff like that, right? So be aware of that. Hamilton's financial plan is economic, right? That involves creating a national debt, a national bank, a whiskey tax, a tariff. Jefferson doesn't like this. Hamilton thinks this is necessary. His plan would have the government assume states' debts, et cetera, right? So be aware of that. Hamilton, remember in the report on manufacturers wants to have uh, a country that is fairly diverse in terms of its economic interests. Jefferson is even much more agrarian. And this is, we're going to see this later with, with Wigs and Democrats too. Beware of the market revolution, a whole bunch of new inventions, right? That happen, oh my goodness. And that's going to change how we communicate, how we transport things. The economy becomes much more widespread, interconnected, faster moving, et cetera. Uh, period five continues that. And then period five and six are going to see things like the Gilded Age eventually, right? So power shifts, like we're going to use steam power, oil, kerosene instead of whale oil, new inventions. A whole bunch of those Bessemer process. Women get involved in the workforce. There's robber barons. Period six is chock full of economic changes. You get Taylorism eventually, trusts and monopolies, strikes and labor unions, lengths of labor. So be aware of those things. Uh, the Sherman Antitrust Act tries to regulate it. And is it really laissez faire? But as I said before, it's really about taking the side of the big businessmen. Transcontinental railroad would be a great example of a new invention or innovation, for sure. Brings the country together. Uh, be aware of the new south, right? Henry Grady's idea for industrialization down south, not just cotton anymore. There's still cotton and it's still a big deal and there's still segregation. But, uh, we're going to introduce some new industrialization, even in the midst of things like convict leasing, et cetera. Free trade. Okay. So free market is the same thing as capitalism. So just do whatever you want. And then, uh, free trade is going to involve no tariffs. Henry Grady is just a guy from the, from the south who talked about the new south, kind of invented the idea, gave a famous speech about it. So just if you see Henry Grady, be aware that he's probably talking about the new south and industrializing the south after the Civil War. Cause they didn't have any industry and that made them kind of suck at the Civil War. Which I suppose was a good thing. But then this includes increased economic opportunities during the Gilded Age, right? For an increase in the middle class, managerial workers, the managerial revolution, as Ria was mentioning. The Tuskegee Institute with this guy Booker T. Washington. Consumer culture becomes a thing during the Gilded Age. So camping and libraries and the circus become a thing. So people have money to spend on that kind of stuff. Oh man, standard of living actually goes up and prices go down thanks to the manufacturing and more efficiency, right? But there are some reform movements in response to this. It's Ida B. Wells, et cetera. I think the progressives, muckrakers, uh, social gospel people, the WCTU, NASA, uh, just being like, hey, um, the economy is unregulated and this is causing problems, especially as people drink, et cetera, et cetera. So be aware of some of that. We'll, we'll get to that more in our period six review. And then Jane Addams, Hull House, et cetera. Political machines become a thing. That's more political. And then be aware of things like the populist party as, and the populist party remembers all about silver. And there's the whole arguments over tariffs and gold or silver, things like that. And then the unit seven economy, just to kind of give you a quick list here, unit seven is way too big. But if you think about the economy in period seven, you should think about the progressives and regulation, as we already mentioned. The laissez faire 1920s where there were a lot more consumer goods, right? We're talking like, um, washing machines and radios and stuff like that. The roaring twenties and technology is going to change that. Fordism, moving assembly line, et cetera. And then unit seven economy really focuses on, on, uh, the 1930s with the Great Depression, the Dust Bowl. It hits manufacturing, hits farmers, then FDR and his New Deal try to solve that. And that's going to make a bunch of economic changes. We've talked about the New Deal a lot already today. And then World War II changes with the arsenal of democracy. And that's going to be when the United States gears up again to help England and help fight World War II, gets us out of a depression. And there you go. We have all of periods three through seven economic, just kind of briefly. Notice there was a lot in period four, six and seven. I'd be aware of those, particularly unit six, right? That incorporates the Gilded Age and that's a big deal. All right. Any final questions? We've got to wrap things up here. Um, how would you differentiate the middle class from the others? Well, they're not super rich. They don't maybe have their own mansions or things like that. They don't own companies, but they might be managers or they might be in middle positions, positions that are a bit more skilled. And the middle class might have some disposable income. So they're not like teetering on the brink of, of poverty. And then the lower class or working class would be doing undesirable jobs, your miners, your sharecroppers, et cetera. Industrial workers too, sometimes if it's unsafe conditions. So a variety of options there. Okay. Well, that's all that I had. I hope you folks have enjoyed this. Hopefully this question and answer session has been somewhat useful to you. You folks brought a lot of good questions. Thank you very much.